Successfully engage our community. And so, yeah, I went home feeling really good last night and I still feel good this morning.
That's the important part.
We're not done with the work and I don't want to pretend like it was perfect. But I think we did a good job under the circumstances and we've learned some things that will serve us well going forward. So, thank you.
And yeah, like you said, we can't thank them enough, all the participants. I mean, it's just an incredible, impressive amount of work and dedication that they all showed. And yeah, I sat in for an hour yesterday and I could tell everyone was very focused and just, okay, let's keep moving, let's keep moving, let's get it done, you know? So when I heard, and that was like, what, three, four o'clock? And then when I heard nine thirty last night, ooh, that's, that's, that's dedication. So, again, we very much appreciate everyone's work and participation.
That, that was twelve hours ago in case you kind of lost track here. Sam, do you have any last comments for us?
I know. Everything has been said. I will underscore the increased capacity the county now has to tackle these thorny issues going forward. And that is an additional plus beyond the incredible work done on solid waste management in Benton County. So it, it, it was absolutely a success. And we'll see what the work group members think. A process evaluation will be going out this afternoon. Their member statements are due on Friday and they, of course, will be bundled together and put in as part of the final report.
Great. Well, thank you all and we'll be looking forward to seeing the final report in a, a week, seven or eight days from now. And so, and open house tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Five o'clock in this room, is that correct?
Yep, everyone's welcome. Yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna stay up here for one more. Is it if you're ready?
Four, four point three update on the FEMA draft implementing, implementation plan for national flood insurance program. And DSH Endangered Species Act integration. It's like a full topic.
Yeah, sorry for the mouthful. Try to try not to use too many acronyms in them, but then they.
Darren got me warmed up, so it wasn't too bad.
Okay, so I'm bringing this up today as part of, so just to give a little background, as part of the formalizing the role of Benton County's floodplain administrator position over the last year. We've been working to focus floodplain related communication from FEMA and external agencies through the floodplain administrator as the key point of contact for Benton County. In this role, Community Development Department, and I have committed to making sure that we're bringing you updates on key information as those, those arise. And I'm aware of some recent activity chatter surrounding FEMA's next steps in working towards compliance between the National Flood Insurance Program and Endangered Species Act. This has been an ongoing project over the last ten plus years with activity brought to local community attention sporadically. It began in two thousand nine when, with a lawsuit indicating that the, the flood insurance, National Flood Insurance Program, the way it was being implemented was potentially causing take two endangered species the way it was, was set up. So in two thousand sixteen, there was a jeopardy opinion that was issued with a one-year timeline identified for implementation of any reasonable and prudent alternatives and, and mitigation measures to help minimize jeopardy and, and impacts Endangered Species Act. But it quickly became apparent that the scope of that was too large to implement in Oregon considering what needed to happen and also Oregon's land use planning laws and the mapping and, and other things, the other bits of information that were, or large pieces of information that were needed to help inform the, the requirements that needed to be established. FEMA was asked for and was granted an extension, a three-year extension in two thousand eighteen and they spent two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one working with the Noah Marine Fisheries and Department of Land Conservation and local communities, performing a lot of outreach and requesting committee involvement and engagement in helping identify ways to implement the needed changes that would work within the regulations, hopefully existing regulations that we already have, but also be effective at multiple different jurisdictional levels. So urbanized cities, rural cities, rural communities, because each one has different needs and, and different situations. The, the most recent round of, of outreach meetings was held in late two thousand twenty-one where FEMA presented the draft Oregon implementation plan for community review and feedback. The current activity that you may have heard about and, and is the, also triggered the, the letter that was attached to the agenda packet was in response to a presentation that FEMA gave last month. That was to reengage communities in the process because there's been kind of a, a break in the process to provide information on current status, share the most recent version of that draft Oregon implementation plan and to solicit feedback from the communities. The draft plan is, has several goals in there. So the, sorry, the idea behind the regulations is that there are three main floodplain functions that need to be protected. One is flood storage. So that addresses things like placement of fill. Another is water quality. That addresses items such as impervious, additional impervious surface. And the third one is riparian vegetation. This, this, that part focuses on trying to minimize removal of, of vegetation along riparian corridors. In the, in the draft implementation plan, there are four options for communities to follow. Those are, they're identifying those as paths A through D. Path A and B are the two most likely for communities to end up following. Path A is to just adopt a blanket model ordinance if your community doesn't have existing floodplain regulations or impervious surface stormwater regulations in place. Then you could potentially, the community could potentially adopt just a blanket ordinance. Path B is the, the path that most communities will fall into. This involves submitting an ordinance checklist to FEMA where the community documents which regulations they already have in place to address the three goals of the, of the needed changes. And then there may be some, some small adjustments that communities might need to make to add in a few extra regulations or adjust them a little bit to make sure that they're fully compliant. Paths C and D are the least likely for communities to follow. Path C is an approved community compliance plan. So that'd be developed by the local community, working with FEMA and Noah Marine Fisheries to meet the no net loss goal that, that's basically the overall objective is creating no net loss to endangered species habitat. And path D is when a community works directly with, on, creates a habitat conservation plan as outlined in section ten of the Endangered Species Act. Most likely Benton County, considering that we are already implementing many of the required requirements that are outlined in the plan, most likely Benton County is going to fall into path B. And we probably won't see very many adjustments. We've already implemented things like prohibiting new land divisions that create lots or parcels without buildable land outside of the special flood hazard area. We have measures in place already that steer new development away from part or all of the special flood hazard area. And then with the current, the recent implementation of our stormwater management requirements, that also takes care of a lot of the, the rest of it where the, the goals are to prioritize low-impact development and nonstructural approaches to stormwater management. And encourage, we already, and we also already have regulations that encourage elevating structures on foundations or posts or piers as opposed to bringing in a bunch of fill in the floodplain. So most of our regulations already comply and we probably won't be seeing a lot of adjustments as a relation, as a result of this, the plan. The current status of the plan is really just a draft. It doesn't have any specific measures identified in it. It does have some, some general ideas. It has examples from other communities, existing regulations for how the, the measures might be implementable. And there are still some steps that would need to be, that will need to be taken before anything goes into effect. The current proposed timeline indicates that the wrap-up and implementation of this total process is likely going to be late two thousand twenty-five. So we've still got several years before it even becomes something where, where it'll need to be implemented. So, and I, the letter that I attached, I understand ASC has issued that requesting communities to join the coalition. We don't think that that's necessary at this time, but I welcome any feedback that you have.
Any questions or comments for Toby?
Sure. You know, this is a topic I've been following for a while because I was at Mary River Watership Council when this process first began and Washington State was in the queue ahead of us. And it's heartening to me to hear that we probably will have most of our bases covered through our current regulatory processes and objectives of those of our code here in Benton County. There's a lot of fear mongering going on with respect to these regulations and I, so yeah, I, I would agree. I don't think that we need to join in that effort to make it seem even more onerous than it is likely to be.
Well, thank you and see Darren, this makes the talking trash group look like a short-term project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Don't you feel better?
Of course, yes, I feel better. So just to kind of wrap this up, we have, working with the federal agencies to identify Toby as the point of contact for Benton County so that our communications come consistently to the same point. Part of that, though, creates a responsibility for us to come to you early and often as things emerge. And so we knew there was a little bit of interest around this topic and we thought it'd be good to kind of share our perspective, but also hear from the board what you would like us to be doing. And I appreciate Commissioner Rose Rose's perspective on this. We will stay tuned and keep you updated. If you need things from us or you, you know, get the sense that things are moving in a different direction, please let us know.
Yeah, I would say just keep us informed on the progress and, and any wrinkles that might be occurring and so, so that we're not surprised. So it seems like we're, we've got a good path. Figured out how to move forward for the county and I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, County Administrator Recruitment Update, Tracy Martino.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just wanted to give you a quick update on the progress of the county administrator search. Over the last couple of weeks, Heather Gantz, who's our recruiter from Raftalus and myself have been reaching out to internal stakeholders that included the leadership team, direct reports for the county administrator, as well as the Board of Commissioners. Want to thank you for your participation. We had great participation for the rest of the group. And Heather is busy consolidating that input into what will become a search brochure to market and promote the position nationally. A couple of things that came up in the course of the interviews with the commissioners were some recommendations for some further input. And so I just wanted to check in with you and confirm that you would like us to reach out with links to the survey for these groups. And also to see if we could, who we would go to to get some contact information for these groups. So I'm just going to go through the list. I'll go through it quickly the first time, just so that all of you get a chance to consider what came up in the course of those interviews and then maybe we can talk a little bit about who would be the contact. So I have the Council of Governments. I have the Community Services Consortium, the NAACP. I'm not sure about this next one, Casa de Latinos Unidos. Do I have that right? Okay. And then city managers within Benton County. And so if I'm missing anything, please let me know. But those were taken both from Heather and my notes. So if you agree with the COG, I guess that's what my first question is, if you would like to reach out to the COG?
I think so.
I would assume that would be Ryan Vogt, the Executive Director.
Okay. And would board staff have that contact information then?
Yes.
For me?
Okay, great. Most of these names are going to be in our constant contact database. Are there people that we invite to open houses and other events regularly?
Sounds like Corey will be my go-to person for this then. Okay, terrific. The CSC?
Peggy Maguire.
Okay. How about the NAACP?
That's Jason J. Dorsett.
I'm sorry?
Jason Dorsett.
And Casa de Latinos Unidos?
There's no D. It's just Casa Latinos.
Oh, thank you.
And it's Ricardo Contreras.
And city managers, I think we can figure that one out if you're in agreement that you'd like us to reach out to them.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
What about leadership from OSU perhaps?
I'm sorry, who?
Leadership from OSU.
We talked about that when I talked with them too and I just wasn't sure whether it rose to the same level of engagement. I don't know. I think that the most engagement was around the pandemic. So Suzanne might have some input there.
Yeah, I mean, I figure if we offer, at least it's a, shows that we acknowledge our partnership, you know?
With the change in the leadership there, I'm not sure either about perspective unless we went to Steve Clark or someone else.
I could do some checking around and get you.
Thanks.
Okay, terrific. So this doesn't, reaching out to these groups doesn't need to delay the process at all? We'll be moving forward with the content for the brochure and then whatever input we receive before that's finalized, we'll incorporate into that. But the input could also be used for creating the selection criteria when we get to the interviewing part of the process and the vetting part of the process. So they will definitely have that ability to weigh in on that. And then, of course, you know, this starts the relationship building for the stakeholder participation in interviews and the public reception as well.
The other major partner during the pandemic, as Suzanne was just pointing out, is with Samaritan. And so Samaritan leadership might also be a, a good place to go. I would go either Laura Henham or with Doug Boyson.
Perhaps Doug Boyson is the best place to start because I think Laura Henham has been a partner on the hospital side of the equation. But also we work closely with our community health network, coordinated care organization, and that's kind of a different side of individuals. So I think Doug might be the person to decide who the right choice would be.
Okay. And Suzanne, I can touch base with you on that.
And those names are also in the contact database.
Okay, thank you very much. So again, before the brochures finalized, we'll run it by you just to ensure that there's no objections. And if there are none, we'll go ahead and get that launched hopefully next week is what we're shooting for. If there's any change in that, I will update though. If you don't have any other questions, thank you.
Oh, thanks Tracy. Appreciate the getting this going and this is critical to our effort. It's nice to hear some progress.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do we want to take a brief break here before we come back to the business meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. And it would be a seven or eight minute break if we come back at five after ten. Seven or eight minute break if we come back at five after ten.
Recording stopped.
Okay. What's that?
Wouldn't that be special? All right.
Recording in progress.
Go ahead and start our business meeting for sort of business is the consent calendar. Any thing we need to about on that or I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Consent calendars approved. See. Seven point one, are we ready for seven point one? Approval of the revised conditions for the rock quarry. And I think that's in I'll see Inga.
Yeah, we don't have them here.
Okay, we will come back to seven point one. And. Go on to new business. And we will skip eight point one and that's part of the. Public hearing that we will have at eleven o'clock for a little bit later. So eight point two discussion and acceptance of Star Creek Road right away dedication and two. Oh easements. Look at that. We will now go back to seven point one. Old business. The matter of adopting order number D D twenty twenty three day zero three nine findings approving revised. Conditions of approval and expansion of a rock quarry is a land use case. LU twenty two days zero four seven Inga Williams.
Thank you. Good morning. So this order includes the changes to the. Preliminary approval conditions and the operating approval conditions. That you approved. At your last meeting as well as all the other conditions that were approved by the planning commission. That were not revised. So we ask that you adopt this order.
I don't have any further questions. I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay. Why don't you proceed?
I move to approve order. The twenty twenty three dash zero three nine.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's a very quick rundown stairs.
Is that all there is fans?
That's all there is to that.
Okay.
We and I don't think Inga wants to give you.
Thank you. All right, now we will. We will skip eight point one. Insert the floor with fire and we will do that in a public hearing eight point two discussion and acceptance of Star Creek Road. Right away dedication with two easements Dave Malone. Good morning.
Good morning. Dave Malone, Public Works Engineering and Survey. As I sat over there, I realized I don't think I've been in front of the board since before COVID started. It's been a while. If I'd have known we had bubbles, I'd have been here sooner. This is an old project of ours at Public Works Star Creek Road improvements that we made to connect. The end of Star Creek with the end of Hell's Canyon. Part of the CWPP program. Which I just mind blanked what that was wildfire protection plan, community wildfire protection plan. This is one of the areas in that plan that has been on the list for a long time to try to connect those two roads as. They both dead ended with quite a few houses on them in rural timberlands. And they wanted an alternative way out. We had an old right away in that area that was not up to current standards and did not have a drivable road on it. So over the years. We rebuilt the road partly through our. Public Works employees and partly through a contract with a private contractor. We acquired right away for bits of that and other easements. One of the last remaining pieces, one of the companies that own property out there. Franklin Clarkson Timber Company. We had a contract with them, but we had to follow up and actually get a right away dedication document and a couple of easements, a slope easement, a drainage weight easement. It took a while, I think once COVID hit. It took us a while to get through that process with them. They finally returned the documents to us and then it sat on my desk for a year. I'll admit for that. So I am now in front of you asking that we accept the right away dedication, the slope easement and the drainage way and covert easement. To finish acquiring all of our needs out there along that stretch that we improved. We will be at some point in the near future coming back to vacate a portion of the old right away that we are no longer using. I've been waiting on that until we got all the new right away acquired. Is there any questions?
The construction is all complete, correct?
The construction is complete. I don't know if you've been made aware, we did have a covert failure. That we are gonna, we're trying to sort out how we're gonna repair that. We're not sure exactly what happened to it, but the top of the covert is collapsing and so we've put metal plates. Over the top of it to hold us over until we figure out a solution. So we will be going back out there to do a little more work, but the the actual project of repairing and our. Improving the road to the standards we were looking for, it has been completed.
Okay.
Yes, I have a question about. Public involvement. So I think you said this came forward from something from the CWPP. Could you just speak to a little bit of? You know, maybe outreach that was done with the public or or how the neighbors there have been involved with this?
The CWPP at that point. That plan has been recently updated, but when we started this project, that was something that had occurred before I worked at Benton County. It was a community wide plan where they identified areas that they were concerned about wildfire. One of the. Thoughts that they could do is there are certain rows they could improve or connect to help in case of a wildfire emergency. Getting community members out and getting wildfire fighters in. Or ambulances or anything like that. This was one of those roads identified. It has BLM property also out there that this went through and we we got a. Grant from the federal agency to spend a little money from them on this. And that's kind of one of the things that kind of pushed it to the forefront of our list. And we had community members out there that were a little concerned about putting this road through because. They felt that they like especially at the end of Star Creek, they had people coming down and dumping trash and stuff already. We felt that this wasn't. Gonna make it any worse, might make it better having an approved road out there. Sheriff's deputies can can travel through there a little easier if they choose to. It is gated on both ends at this time. That was one of the, I guess concessions that was made with the community members. They wanted it gated. And so that's what we established it as for now. We'll see if that continues in the future. It may at some point be opened by the board up to full time travel. So we do. Have to do some maintenance on it, even though it's not actively being used all the time. Roads degrade if you don't do some maintenance constantly. We want to make sure. Everything's like the covert that's failing. We want to make sure if a fire truck has to go out there, it's going to be safe doing that. As far as the community members, you know, we we contacted send out notices to everybody in the area when we did this work. We did get feedback from some of them. Like I said, some of them weren't too happy about it at first. But I think as we work through the project, more and more the people I talked to at least. Were excited about it. A couple of the properties. The one at the very end of the of Star Creek previously. Has had a lot of cleanup done on it since we've done this. And I think has made it a more valuable property to the owner. Another property was purchased by. Another couple that run the bee place Queen Bee Alpine and they're using. Another property out there and I don't think if they hadn't had the road improvements, I don't think they would have considered doing that. So. There's been some positive benefits besides the CWPP plan. That we're trying to accomplish.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate you mentioning that. And that's kind of where I was going is I thought I remembered hearing. Yeah, some concerns from people that lived out there with. You know, people coming through and engaging in unsavory, you know, activities because it was such a little tucked away location. So.
In our road file for Star Creek, we have a stack of documents of things that used to go out on the end of this road.
It's a storied history.
Hatfields and McCoy kind of thing going on. It got to the point that road workers were told not to go out there by themselves.
Thanks, okay.
So we feel. A lot of those people are gone and with these road improvements. Where I've been out there, not real recently, but in the fall and I there was no trash piled up like there used to be people dumping their garbage and. Couches and stuff, so tires. So it's it's it looks better, it looks nicer. And now we have. Another access point in case there's a wildfire for people to escape from that.
Very good, thank you.
On the gated part, so this is a county road.
Correct.
That has limited access.
Yeah. There was, I believe there was a board order done to establish those gates. I think Laurel or handle that, but. So it would take a board order to remove them at this point, I think is how that would work. The idea was at the time that since the community wasn't excited about having the through road. We we would honor their request for that and Hell's Canyon. It has some stub standard areas that we we weren't too excited about having full time traffic going through anyway. So. Until we get a chance to improve some of that. You know, it's it's it you people can get in and out, but we wouldn't want a lot of traffic going in and out on a couple of stretches of Hell's Canyon roads, so.
What what what's the method of access to the gates?
I'm not sure, actually. That was, I think, handled through the road department manager.
And here's Laurel.
There's Laurel.
Yeah, I figured I'd chime in and yes, we did have a board order for establishing those gates. We do that. And good morning, by the way. The keys are for the locks are what we've done in the past on most of our gates. But it would be a question for Rich. Swafford as far as the status for that. Because sometimes those locks mysteriously disappear. And so it is, it is something that we regularly deal with on the gates that are locked with the emergency services as well as our road crew. So.
Because that's always a concern with. Emergency services and does the. Do the people responding have the right key and has anything been? So I guess I would be interested in a. A plan for. Eventually getting rid of the gates or or a different system other than keys and. Multiple locks or however.
Yeah, it's it's not the best situation. For an emergency access to be locked. I know we have this in a couple of places, Commercial Street outside of Monroe. Cardwell Hill. We're working on a road connecting the end of Evergreen to Greasy Creek. Access through there. So you know, it's always a concern. Best solution. Sometimes I don't know what that is. You know, our emergency services may have a key, but if they're not the first ones out there. Yeah.
Bolt bolt cutters work a lot of times.
A lot of these are built, so boat color boat cutters are very hard to use on them.
In most of these neighborhoods, a lot of them where we've done this kind of work so far, they've been. What's the name of it? Wildfire communities. Maybe Sheena knows what I'm trying to say. They're the they're the.
Firewise.
Firewise, thank you. And in those cases, the community is organized and someone in the community often has keys as well. But I'm not sure about Star Creek because when we first started working out there. That community was not exactly getting along, you know, as well. So. Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I would. Without talking to Rich, the road manager, I'm not sure on this one.
Maybe back to Laurel on the. Oak Creek evacuation route that's going down to the OSU sheep farm. I know there was a discussion of. Where there will be a gate there. Have we come up with any kind of clever? Way of getting through those gates.
Those conversations are still happening because we want to make sure that we coordinate not only with the city of Corvallis, but also, you know, with our sheriffs. As well as doing something that, you know, is still Oregon state property. So it needs to be, you know, according to their desires as well. So it's it's we understand it's an issue and we're still, like I said, talking through it right now.
I want an app on my phone.
Is there a service out there?
Something more modern than a series of locks and keys that aren't always in. In the right vehicle.
Yeah.
So I guess my my thought is at this time, the county is comfortable having a gated county road and. at having a a gated uh county road and uh partly because of the need to uh in in make improvements on the uh Hell Hell's Canyon section at some point. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think, you know, my as my personal opinion, when we developed this project, I was concerned about gating it. But as the community expressed their opinion, I think we would have lost their support without that on this one. Um and as I drove up and down Hell's Canyon a few times, there's some stretches there where if a fire truck was coming up and a community member was leaving, there would be no place to pass. Um there's some very narrow stretches on that road. You know, it's built, it was, I think it was originally built for a logging truck, basically.
Who who has the right of way, uh whichever direction they're going.
The bigger truck.
Yeah, okay. Uh well, I guess uh keep us posted on that and and i- it sounds like some of the initial o- opposition has uh moved away, gone away and uh kind of uh change can be a little scary and now it's it's not theoretical. Here it is and and uh especially with the more concern about uh wildfire um potential and having more than one uh way in or out is uh is a good thing.
Yeah.
And and I think most people know uh are are more aware of that than they were a few years ago.
I hope so.
No, I'm I'm sure of it. It doesn't mean everybody, but uh there's uh there is more more concern and and just like you say, uh i- if uh a fire truck and a car can't get past each other, then something's wrong, you know, something needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, the stretch that we built uh definitely is built to standards to allow that. And Star Creek is a little wider road. Hell's Canyon is fairly wide up to a certain point. And it was just a can't think of Reese Creek, I think, is the crossroad that it's wide, it's plenty wide up to there. It's once it passes there that it gets narrow. And at the time before we did this, there was only one house up at the end of this road. Um one or one property, has two houses on it, but one property. And he was the only one besides the logging trucks that were using it. So he was one of the people showing concern about more people coming up through there. But on the Star Creek end, I think we found that it improved it. We haven't had the people coming and dumping the trash and we haven't had the people coming down there trying to brew meth or anything like that. So I think having it open and having the Queen Bee, I forget their names, having purchased that property, having them using their property, you know, shows people that there's community out there. And so you get rid of the the problems that were happening, I think.
Well, and I think usually if you clean up old dump piles and and uh and start fresh, you have a have a chance of that that uh that not occurring anymore. I I can see, well, we we always dumped there. Uh uh my daddy dumped there. Uh so uh I I think made uh good progress and and uh a- a- and that's a problem countywide. And so it's not not just uh
Right.
th- this area and you need to, we need to be aware of that and do what we can to uh minimize that.
Yep. And meanwhile, we met the needs of the CWPP and um and we'll keep moving, looking forward for other opportunities for that over the years, I'm sure.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move to accept the right of way dedicated to Benton County for road and utility purposes to accept the slope easement granted to Benton County and to accept the drainage way and culvert easement granted to Benton County by Franklin Clarkson Timber Company LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, all for Star Creek Road, County Road number three, five, three, zero, zero. Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the background.
Yeah, this one was a little older, so. Kind of lose track of them sometimes. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving right along, uh discussion and action regarding designating a proxy for Community Services Consortium Governing Board Meetings. Commissioner Ujuro.
Thank you. Um as you all know, we um often have trouble uh with quorum at our Community Services Consortium meetings. But we're a third of the board and it's usually not because of the absence of one of us. Um it's usually because of absences of our fellow commissioners from either Lynn or Lincoln County. However, each county is um at this point, um per the bylaws of the organization, going to designate a proxy uh so that we have someone that we can call upon when we know that a commissioner will be absent, so that we can meet quorum. Um it would have been very handy to have at our last meeting. But unfortunately, we didn't, uh because none of the counties had yet appointed their proxy. So um I had spoken with Joe about this uh before he departed and then um spoke with Suzanne uh the other day. And um it seems most logical to appoint uh our public health director or acting public health director because the services that Community Services Consortium as a community action agency provides are most closely related to our public health uh functions over in the Health Department. So uh I would suggest uh that we uh appoint April Holland as our proxy. Uh and that if we are going to be absent for a board meeting, uh we make sure that we let Mariah and April know so that um she can be ready to attend if necessary.
Uh so the idea is April could replace one of us, uh but not uh represent uh any other county or uh.
She um the way it has worked in the past with the quorum uh at Community Services Consortium and the way that the bylaws are written, a proxy can stand in, yes, for for any one of us commissioners. Um and thus constitute a quorum. And previously, um they didn't even have to be a related person and we could appoint a proxy as um on the fly if the majority of the board members from the that county, they Benton County, agreed to do so. And I I think that oh many of us were uncomfortable with that. And uh suggested this as an alternative, that we have a proxy per county and that they were on standby uh in order to achieve quorum, so that we also had someone engaged that knew about the workings of of the Community Services Consortium and could um in good faith serve in that role.
But for example, you know, four of us, us three plus our proxy, four couldn't come and have our proxy stand in for someone from Lincoln County for example. Yeah, okay.
But but they they have the same, they're getting the same opportunity.
Absolutely.
So that uh uh I I I'm all all in favor of this, uh fighting quorum issues on a regular basis. Uh something's wrong and uh needs to be uh fixed. So I I I think this is a a reasonable uh solution and and it's been done before, but not quite uh like this.
Not enough. Yeah, yes, we're trying to formalize it such that we have a known person that will serve as the proxy. Yes.
And as, does April know about this?
Hi, I do know about it. Um and I'm I'm happy, happy to uh to participate. I think it's a it's a great idea and it'll it'll help um strengthen our already strong partnership with CSC.
Uh I was pretty sure I knew the answer to that, but just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Need a motion?
We do.
I would move that we appoint April Holland um as the proxy uh for the Benton Commissioners uh to serve on the Community Services Consortium Governing Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh it is um can we do this? So uh there's no timetable. If uh one of us knows we're going to be gone, we could uh alert April uh an hour before or a week before, you know.
I think the longer before the better. And we are going to also want to make sure that Emily Day at Community Services Consortium has contact information for April so that April can receive a packet regardless of whether she will be serving as proxy and be aware of the business at hand.
Great. Uh oh, thank you for organizing this and thank thank April for volunteering.
Thank you, April.
All right. I think we're at eight point four, discussion regarding budget committee membership solicitation solicitation, Rick Gregor. Happy birthday.
You.
You're singing or no, just kidding.
And and you're lucky it wasn't Saturday, so you wouldn't have to deal with the April fools.
Exactly. Uh good morning, commissioners. Uh thank you for uh having me on the agenda today. I I coming for you today. Looking for uh some help, support and some guidance. I think all three of you know that as in accordance to budget law, we have a budget committee that uh works to approve our countywide budget as well as our nine one one service district, you know, li- library service district. Um this is by law, a committee that has to be made up of citizens as well as the three of you, needs to be equal amounts. Um the law does say that um, you know, while it needs to be equal amounts, we need to uh make an asserted effort. If if a vacancy becomes known, uh asserted effort and if for some reason or another, we're not able to fulfill that, then certainly you could move forward with a budget committee of five as opposed to the required six. Um having said that, um we uh as again, as you know, we we got the resignation of one of our uh citizen budget committee last week. And so we are also scheduled to begin budget committee hearings on April eighteenth, two weeks from tonight. Um so uh looking to you to uh be, I guess, a thought partner in terms of how we proceed in in terms of maybe identifying uh particular members. Also, again, listening to the public, uh if for those that are listening and any ideas and thoughts about who would be potential members to join us. Obviously, so this will need to happen relatively quickly to be able to meet the the April eighteenth. Um I sort of did it uh kind of a a plan in my head that thinking we would obviously need to get someone identified uh within probably a week's worth of time so that we could at least by April eighteenth have uh you all appoint that board member so that they could start that evening. Um and so that's sort of the the fast track that we're on at this point. Uh obviously, you know, uh from uh and another piece around guidance. At this plan, at this point, um I have not posted public notice for the public public hearings. I held that purposely last week when I found out there was a resignation. So w- we do have the opportunity to potentially push the budget hearing since I had not posted that. My desire would be not to do that. Uh obviously, there's there's a lot of work that needs to be done in a relatively short period of time to be able to get to June for a adopted budget. But um again, that is an option that we could, you know, buy ourselves a little bit more time. So uh just hoping to have perhaps a discussion with with the three of you today and and maybe get some guidance. And then, like I said, also to just make it aware from a public standpoint that we we do have a vacancy right now that we uh would like to fill.
I have thoughts. Um I uh when I first became a commissioner, uh we did not advertise for this position. It was one that was appointed um only. And I fully believe in in greater transparency and participation. And this is one of the most instrumental ways that uh our community members can be engaged with the county in terms of helping us select our funding priorities. Um so I would love to see this advertised. Um I know recognize that it's a very limited amount of time. Um there in the past, there've been a couple of different email lists that have been used for posting uh when we have vacancies that have been extremely fruitful. One of those has been the um Corvallis Sustainability Coalition um mailing list uh that uh Teresa is well aware of at this point, I think, although Sean McGuire has often reposted there uh as well. Um and personally, I would be very interested in recruiting um a woman because we have two men um from the community. And I'd love to see someone um represent a different sector of the community. Um and um in in if there is opportunity for racial and ethnic diversity, that'd be great. Um because we again need to balance out our very um Anglo white profile at this point if we can. Um but I'm also cognizant of the fact that the budget meetings take a lot of time. And uh we have, I can't remember how many scheduled, seven, which we might not use all of. Um but each meeting is at least a couple of hours in length and many of them take place during the day. Um therefore, whoever we do appoint has to understand uh what they're signing up for. Um and that it is a significant time commitment um and requires time flexibility on their part. But that it's also mostly an every other year job. So uh it's not as if it uh is an ongoing huge time commitment. So uh with that, you know, uh those are my preferences.
Yeah, I would prefer that we uh post it, advertise it, yeah, some notify that we're looking. Um and then just, I don't know, try to think outside the box. Hey, we just had a bunch of Benton County tox trash people that um maybe they're, maybe they're uh gonna be like, hey, what am I doing with all my free time now? Maybe one of them wants to serve. Um I don't know, but let's send out, you know, notification to that, to them.
Yeah.
Others, I don't know, or maybe check with um people who have applied in the past
Yeah.
to our budget committee that we that haven't had a chance to serve yet.
We also, of course, have a an extensive contact list and um newsletter list that Cory, our PIO stewards. So there are lots of ways to get the word out. I think that it would also be useful if each of us, you know, thinks about uh potential candidates and encourages people to apply.
Check. So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh my thoughts similar, but uh you mentioned possibility of postponing the initial meeting and I I think that's a bad idea. Uh just we have we know when the end date is and if we start uh changing the uh start date, I think that that could be a problem. So I I I'm assuming we've had meetings in the past where not every uh community member uh was was present, so we have uh function uh with less than six. And that that should be the goal for the eighteenth and uh start the process. But uh we're not in complete control of the timing and when people respond and uh compiling some kind of list. So uh I I think I would uh stick with the the hard one schedule that's been developed and do our best to um get the third community member uh appointed by that time. But uh go for i- if we have to go forward without uh a a full uh three, three member, three community members so that we can uh keep to our schedule and uh hopefully they would only miss a meeting and could get uh caught up and and uh pro- proceed with the schedule.
So I guess as a proposal um to you all in terms of of thank you very much for your feedback and and thoughts around this. So from the the standpoint of process, uh so our last date to make a posting to be in compliance would be the I'm targeting the eleventh of April, so I have to have the actual posting. And um so if we wish to proceed, um I could sort, of course, wait all the way to that point. But I think if you're all three at the point, well, let's let's forge forward. April eighteenth is what we scheduled. We could certainly post that at any point and just make that a given. That gives us essentially um two weeks uh to be able to get uh something out in terms of uh get the word out. Uh I'm certainly will work with Cory to put something together to really meet some of the expectations and the thoughts that you all have about what you're looking for. So we could get something through mailing list. Obviously, you all are uh also very important and can help carry that word. Um I guess I'll look to Vance just in terms of from a timing standpoint, if let's say hypothetically, we were able to identify someone the week of well, as I guess it would be next week, that we would identify someone, would we still be able to officially appoint them uh on April eighteenth? I don't know if there's a certain on, on April eighteenth? I don't know if there's a certain timing.
There, there's no real timing requirement. Um, and I just would remind the board that you know, set, the board has set a policy of making formal decisions at these board meetings. But any public meeting, if it is noticed, you could add an agenda item for the appointment of a public member. So, you know, if you're meeting with public board, for example, you could tack that on the bottom of that. So, the opportunity to appoint a board, board member should present themselves. And you can do that as quickly as you like and have that person take, uh, begin to wave through the documents as early as he or she can use them.
Okay. That, thank you, Vance. That was actually good, good insight that we have other opportunities in which we could appoint. Also to aim, if you, if you might do in terms of the regular, uh, Tuesday meeting, that's what I'll sort of target. Knowing that there's some flexibility that we could, could do that at any point. And, and there's nothing that says that, let's say, we do get started. Again, by law, we would be appropriate to start, uh, even if there's five minute members, you could also still, I'm assuming a point after we get started, that person would just be behind, correct?
Yes, and, and we've had this happen. It is no different than a, a budget committee member missing a couple of hearings. We just ask them to, to go through the material. So when come time to vote on the whole budget, they're fully informed, uh, of the departments and the budget will present before they.
Great.
My expectation is that with the reorganization of the budget process, that it will be simpler to catch up this time around than it has been in the past.
I think so.
So, yeah, thank you for that.
So, I guess, remind me, so you said there's seven meetings currently scheduled, is that correct? Okay, um, and then we're not, we're hoping that we don't have to use them all, is that correct?
Yeah, at this point, uh, commissioner wise, what I have on the, the plan is eight total meetings are scheduled. Seven I have, uh, scheduled to, um, actually occur.
Okay, okay.
Uh, we could certainly find that we go faster. I, again, this is, is, as you know, it's always my first rodeo. So I'm expecting, you know, probably not maybe what I'm accustomed to as Suzanne is, and I had talked. But certainly I want to make sure there's sufficient time, uh, and I want this committee to feel like they have a chance to ask questions and maybe challenge or question some of the investments being made. So I, I want to make that room, but I'll certainly move as fast as you like as well.
Okay.
So Vance has told me that he can really, you know, he can help me with my, my timeframe, so.
I, I have, but I noticed you're, you're to present part of my budget. So my timeframe that I gave you was in minutes.
The, uh, in the, I, based on the calendar we have this year, uh, I would say that most of these meetings probably will not use the full time allotted. Um, it'll mostly be a little bit shorter than that. Um, and the extra meeting is in case, at the end of the process, if we need an extra meeting for deliberations. If there's a, there's a real serious need for further discussion, so.
Okay, I guess I'll just reiterate my, the most important thing to me is that somebody can attend the meetings. Cause I, I think that's the trouble we ran into last time around was the individual tried their, their best, but just couldn't make the meetings. So, and like Commissioner Ojo stated, it is hard to, you know, fit that in your schedule when you have a full job, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Okay. That's, that's what I needed. Thank you very much. Appreciate the guidance. I will, like I said, get to work with Cory. I might run by you guys to, in terms of the, the advertisement, uh, that, that we want to sort of put out just to make sure I'm capturing, uh, well, in terms of what we're looking for, but we'll try to turn that around very quickly, uh, and that will, you know. But I, I think what I'm hearing though is move forward with your April eighteenth plan. Uh, and that's, I can at least get Lindsay getting that requirement met.
And I would suggest as part of the, uh, public outreach is, is explaining the, the short turnaround time that, that there is, it wasn't that we were, oh gee, we don't have a full, um, well, committee that, that, uh, at the end of March, we heard that, um, one of our three members is not going to be able to, uh, continue. And so we're, uh, scrambling a little bit to find a replacement.
I will definitely make sure I put that there. Thank you all for your, for your guidance on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Right, uh, takes care of new business, uh, next up, and I think we can, uh, get this. Yeah, but might as well, uh, uh, get to the department reports, nine point one. Approval of the twenty twenty-two Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program, A W P P Annual Report. Shannon Stanglass. Good morning.
Uh, good morning. Uh, good to see you all. Um, I thought, uh, I would just run through some updates of, uh, developments in the last year and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Um, we can also run through the, uh, U S D A Wildlife Services reporting of deer pickup and, um, calls to our county trapper Landon. And, uh, it was a pretty, pretty busy year on that end. So, um, I'll go ahead and start out with, uh, the fact that, uh, I, I'm still really enjoying coordinating this program. And I can't tell you how much positive feedback, uh, I get regarding it, which as a public employee is, is pretty rare and a pretty amazing experience. Um, in this past year, I've actually gotten several calls from, uh, folks outside of the county. And actually somebody from Benton County, Arkansas, who wanted help. Uh, and I was able to at least redirect her to her own government.
County, Arkansas?
Yeah.
There's one in Washington, too.
I lived in Benton, Kenny, Washington and Benton, Kenny, Arkansas.
Well, that's pretty good, yeah.
I knew you were special, Vance, but I had no idea.
Now we know why you're here. Yes, yes. So, um, I'm hoping our new website address doesn't further confuse that. But, uh, yeah, so feedback has been really positive. Uh, the folks that have received grants in this last year all had really wonderful things to say. So in twenty twenty-two, we awarded six grants to folks with pretty diverse farms. And we had four of those projects completed. Uh, unfortunately, one, uh, awardee did not report back. Uh, I wasn't able to get ahold of them. I suspect they were probably just overwhelmed and couldn't follow through with their grant. Um, and another awardee, uh, had weather and standing water issues on their property from our interesting winter, and they just unfortunately could not get their fence project completed with that type of weather. So they will be reapplying and I look forward to seeing that. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we did meet as a committee and discuss some of the challenges that folks face when they have wildlife issues. Um, in particular, you are all probably familiar in the fall of twenty twenty-two. We had a series of cougar predations in Philomath that impacted a pretty wide variety of folks. And that really did raise the question of, uh, this is a really wonderful resource for people. But what do you do when these things are happening and you don't, you can't wait until the next July essentially? Or even September to start your project. Um, because we tend to do have, we do tend to have some funds left over at the end of biennium. At the, uh, end of the biennium, uh, it was kind of decided as a group that it would be expeditious to provide emergency grants to folks with the same grant requirements that the normal application cycle has. But people can apply any time of year. And this is just a, um, kind of building up of, uh, what we had as a beaver specific funding pot. So that was a five thousand dollar pot of money. Uh, we did not get any applications for beaver conflicts in twenty twenty-two. But I just fielded a call yesterday, uh, from a really wonderful local farm that did contact me last year and didn't move forward. And they will be applying for funds, uh, to do some portable electric fencing because the beaver have found their, uh, spring crops and seem to really enjoy them. So, uh, it's really positive to see, uh, farms reaching out for problems like this because it would be very easy to just do lethal management. Um, so to build onto that emergency, uh, grant idea, what also occurred last year was U S D A Wildlife Services contacted me. And they have new funds on their end, uh, for partner governments, essentially for non-lethal beaver management. Um, they may be creating actually a full-time position for that as well to be able to come out and help us. So we can actually, uh, continue to provide year-round, uh, non-lethal beaver funds for constituents by, uh, utilizing these funds. And so the addition of the emergency grant, uh, on top of just hat being specific to beavers, um, allows us to help a lot more people. And, uh, of those emergency grants, um, we have two that are currently working on completing those projects. Uh, one got very busy and plans to actually reapply, uh, during the next normal grant cycle because unfortunately they have already lost their poultry. Um, on the beaver end as well, we did have a nice little meeting with folks from, uh, NOAA, O D F and W and, uh, some of the A W P P Committee. And I think we had kind of a shortage in communication because it sounds like O D F and W gets a lot of reports of beaver issues. Um, but I wasn't really aware of those and then so I couldn't help folks. So I hope that that communication short circuit is a little bit better in the future and we will be getting more, uh, communications on that front from local landowners that I can help them with. Um, a couple other just exciting developments, uh, I'm working on getting all of our forums, uh, reporting forums and application online so that people can do that. And that saves me, um, having to collate data from paper reporting forms. And I hope that will also boost reporting compliance from folks that have received grants because it is a little difficult to sit down and fill out a paper report every year. Um, I plan to go to farmers markets this summer and, uh, actually just reach out to vendors and say, we have this program. Uh, and I also plan on attending the fair, uh, for both the A W P P but also our other environmental projects, like our stormwater program, um, or anything else that we think might be useful. That's kind of in my realm of, uh, all of the random things that I do. Um, uh, in addition with the U S D A funds, uh, I was able to actually purchase a small unmanned, uh, uh, aerial system, so a drone and, uh, uh, D G I Mavic. And I was able to take the F A, uh, Remote Pilot, uh, certification. And so now we have this really amazing tool that we can use for outreach, uh, wetlands assessments and other public works environmental assessments in the future. So I'm hoping that I can get out there and, uh, do some test missions when the weather stops doing this. Uh, whatever it's doing, I don't know. Um, and the two other major, uh, topics I wanted to, to mention for you, um, are the fact that we did also discuss a shift in timeline. And I do have to say, um, you know, this was also inspired by the fact that I was really lucky enough to be a grant recipient before I started with the county several years ago. And there were many days in the pouring rain trying to build on to a chicken coop in November. Um, that is, seems a little unnecessary. So in spirit of making things more positive for recipients, I spoke to everyone I could. And we really felt that shifting our application period to October, approving grants by December. And then folks will have January essentially through April, uh, and maybe part of May to implement their projects. And this fits a lot better with the farming schedule as well. So I look forward to that. I think that's going to be a really positive change. Um, and our emergency grants provide a little bit of a buffer as well for that shift. And, uh, lastly, the county was able to secure, uh, five thousand dollars actually to make a short. Um, I don't know if I should say promotional film, but, uh, similar to the Jackson, Jackson Fraser, uh, informational video, uh, about the Ag and Wildlife Protection Program. So, uh, Cory and Johnnie and all of us are gonna, uh, meet soon on that. And it'll be just a short video with probably a couple of representatives talking. And we're hoping to visit one or two farms and really showcase the program. Um, so, uh, that's, I guess, the program in a nutshell, uh, for the year. And I'm happy to answer questions or I could speak a little bit on the, um, U S D A report as well.
I have a couple of quick questions and then I would love to hear the, uh, U S D A statistics. Um, the beaver, I mean, the U S D A Wildlife Services Program that was just created is a new money. Is that beaver specific or is it, okay?
It is, yeah, it is. And I think that was federally allotted. There's, um, there's a big movement towards non-lethal beaver management. And even Colorado put out a really fantastic, uh, guidebook as well recently. So people are getting on board.
Yeah, and I understand you got a stuffed beaver for educational purposes.
Oh, I did, yeah. And actually too, that was an accident. So now we have La Vida Beaver and Justin Be- Beaver.
That's lovely. Um, and, uh, I also know that, that a couple of the folks that have been involved in the program from the start, Randy and Pam Comelio, uh, have been working with the legislature to get state legislation, um, passed to create a program statewide. Um, but I don't think it, uh, survived the first cutoff. Um, but, but O D F W is at least a little bit more interested now when there's talk of some sort of a working group in the interim.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's exciting. Um, I think most of these bills, um, having been at O D F and W previous to this that, you know, it takes a few rounds for them to stick. Um, so that's really, um, amazing. That is, uh, Ray Field, I believe, that is supporting that. And now with the U S D A movement to non-lethal beaver management, that is going to be a statewide program as well regardless.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Statewide program monitored by.
U S D A.
Okay.
Yep. And I think that's through Wildlife Services specifically, but I'm not entirely sure.
And not in R C S.
Pardon?
And not in R C S, Natural Resources Council.
Um, they may be involved, but it seems, it seems really internal to the, um, Wildlife Program.
Okay.
Um, I can recount a little bit of the, uh, the trapping report as well. So we did have several deer pickups. Um, interestingly enough, there were a lot of coyote issues, it seems this time around. Um, so, um, there was actually another call early last year where, uh, fortunately, uh, uh, it was believed that some sheep went missing due to a cougar, but they actually found those sheep, um, in a building on the property. So, uh, they'll, they can be a little bit wily, I suppose. Um, we did meet, uh, Laurel Byer, my supervisor, and I did meet with, uh, Brian Thomas as well. And our contract with them is going to be fairly similar. They lost, I believe, O D F and W funding, but we're able to make that up in another, uh, regard. So it's going to be about the same amount. Um, and then we did discuss a new reporting mechanism, um, because I guess it's difficult on their side to generate reports. Um, Landon and I are going to touch base quarterly and I'm just probably gonna, you know, go through what he's done and um, kind of put that together on our end. Um, whereas the deer pickups, I think, will be probably reported the same way.
Good. I think that that's been an ongoing challenge is that we've wanted to get report about the lethal, uh, program, the lethal trapping program. And, and they've never, historically, they didn't keep any, uh, informal reports. And so, um, our pressure has, um, it's, it's been challenging for them to adapt. So I'm glad that now that you're, um, on this program year-round all the time, uh, we can accommodate their needs as well.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see. And, um, I think it will strengthen that relationship too. So Landon does go out as well. Uh, for instance, when we did the Hubbard Bridge project, he went and removed, uh, nests before they could have eggs. So, um, they did a nice service for us there. And I think there are other projects in this year and next that we'll be working with them on too.
Good.
Yeah.
So can we come out and watch you fly the drone?
Um, sure, let me try a couple of times first.
Okay, okay.
We'll see if we have a drone still.
Okay, no, well, thank you very much. It sounds like all of this work that you've been doing is just awesome.
So, well, thank you so much. It's, it's so fun and so rewarding. And I'm just like, when I started at the county and Laurel said I got to help coordinate or coordinate the A W P P, I was pretty over the moon. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh. Just to comment, uh, early in your report, you mentioned, um, not getting the information that would have been helpful from O D F and W. Uh, and I assume that's better in, in the future. Uh, cause there are obviously different, uh, state and federal agencies doing similar work and then, uh, I guess anything we can do to, uh, similar work and then uh I guess anything we can do to uh encourage and and help get that exchange of the information and and uh figuring out that we're trying to head in the same direction. And but i- it would be much better if uh everybody knew what the other agency was uh doing or planning on doing. But uh uh I I think this is uh a great program and and like was uh mentioned, just because uh uh the state wasn't funded in the current legislative session. My prediction is there will be more legislative sessions where uh uh well, it seems like a lot of times it just um projects work up the list and and more people get familiar with uh what that one actually means. Uh, I think they had over four thousand bills uh introduced at the start of the session. And and so there's a lot of uh pruning. Uh, so you know, th- there there's limited horsepower as far as paying attention and budgeting and and so, but I I think that's a great one to uh reintroduce and um hopefully be uh successful next next time.
You you know, if we want to strengthen that probability, it would be um smart to invite Shayna and perhaps Randy and Pam to come and speak at AOC Natural Resources Steering Committee meeting. Uh, because uh the more that um local commissioners are familiar with this kind of a program, especially in um frontier parts of the state. Um, and and they understand the nature of the program and that involuntary aspects, the more likely it is that there will be legislative support. So we definitely have a role to play if we want to do so.
Yeah, I would. I would love to do that. And uh that also might kind of spread the word to other counties as well because I do get that that interest.
Yep, I think that it would be a good thing for both of you guys tend to participate in the Natural Resources Committee. That'd help. And the other is that you're participating also in the Beaver Partnership, correct? That this going on between watershed councils.
A little bit. I did name their website, which was leaveittobeavers.org, but um yeah, so I'm in communication with them and I uh really attend to all these extra meetings with our collaborators as much as I can. And it's just been nice to work with folks too. So, yeah.
I love that name.
Well, and uh the advantage we have now, this isn't a theoretical. Oh, I we think this is a good idea. This has a a nice um track record. And uh I think can guide other jurisdictions to uh uh just how to set up program.
And I would highlight for anyone that is watching that heard about the fact that we have an opening on our uh budget committee, that this program emerged out of our budget hearings. Um, the first um set of budget hearings I participated in. Uh, yes, back in twenty seventeen. So.
Yeah, that sounds right. Yeah, there you go.
We we don't have a decade in into it yet, but we're getting closer.
Yeah, the the years seem to go by quicker these days.
Uh, there is a motion in the packet to accept the report. Um, so uh I would move that we approve the twenty twenty-two Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Programming Report.
All in favor, say aye. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Fifteen years here, I think we will um go to the public hearing then. You gave me a script. I mean, it was a good one. Where to go? Who took my script? Check under the bubble maker. All right, th- this is a public hearing for the Flemish Fire and Rescue District Annexation. And uh so you said I do not need to read the entire script. So I will uh cut right to uh staff and um Dave Malone to uh give us the background on this uh effort.
Okay, uh, we were petitioned by Rex and Karen Burnett, who own property on Wells Creek Road. Uh, right, right. Currently their property is adjoining the Flemish Fire and Rescue District. Keep wanting to say rural, but that's no longer in there. And so they petitioned to be in the fire district. The fire district uh board reviewed their petition and approved it. And at this point, uh just comes before you unless there is anybody who was wanting to speak at the public hearing against this.
This is a pretty straightforward annexation statutorily. It goes, um, if there if there is a hundred percent of the folks who wish to annex, uh they they petition the uh former fire board, the port fire board, and they have uh approves the annexation. It comes to Benton County. Uh Benton County has very limited bases upon which to review the uh application and to not to deny it. One of which doesn't have comprehensive plan. Um, I don't think that's an issue here. So uh I hate to use the term rubber stamp. It sounds ugly. I'll just say Benton County as the governing body has very little flexibility um in in having reviews these applications. But the bottom line is these are typically very, very well received. The outcome is the properties are within uh fire fire protection district, which is really the everything.
Yeah. Well, I know one of the notices we send out on these, we send them to the property owner. We send them to uh the fire district. And we send one to the Department of Forestry, Oregon Department of Forestry, because it does affect them. Um, one of the things I learned about doing this process is that the people who fight wildland forest fires are not certified to fight house fires. And so a property like this, which is not in the district, a fire starts, there's not really anybody to come fight the fire for if their house is on fire. So this is how they get their house protected.
Yep. And um, yeah. It's a, it's a hard lesson to learn if you learn it the wrong way.
Yeah.
And um I uh was, my only question was, are there many of the other neighbors out there on Wells Creek that are not in the fire district?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Uh, tha- that Wells Creek neighborhood, um uh there are several homes. Um, are most of them in the Flemish?
There, most of them are not, I don't think. Yeah. You know, I don't know what goes through a community's mindset when they, uh, Mr. Burnett told me that he had talked to his neighbors in a previous time before this one with the idea of doing this. And people just, he didn't find a lot of interest in it. And he let it drop for a while. And now he's decided to do it on his own.
Yeah.
Well, and uh, like I talked to you a little bit uh earlier. Oh, maybe it was Vance, but uh the fire districts generally aren't looking to expand or making up bigger territory. Uh, uh, they're waiting for uh the homeowners, property owners to uh come to the fire district and say, we want, uh, we would like to be uh in- included uh in- inside the the boundaries and as long as it's uh contiguous, uh, that's a fairly I I think they're they're generally uh approved. So it it's uh uh definitely not the fire district wanting greedily looking for more uh uh territory, but just uh um making sense out of uh uh boundaries and with with uh in the process initiated by the uh homeowners. So that that uh makes it fairly uh straightforward on our our part as county council is so eloquently um stated. So uh any other? Uh, well, let's see, what else do I do? Vance, uh, ask again for if there's any members of the public who wish to uh comment at this time?
Yes.
Right then, and we have not received any written uh objections or correspondence.
I have not.
Close the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is closed. So a- any other um questions or comments?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve order number D twenty twenty-three dash zero three seven for the annexation of territory into the Flemish Fire and Rescue District by the authority of ORS one nine eight and ORS four seven eight.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you for bringing forward a nice, simple um project.
What do you mean?
Yep.
Rolled into this?
No.
That's the adoption of of the uh which you just did.
Okay, so.
So, okay, and there's a separate motion, right?
I I I knew that Vance. I asked. Um, yes.
So we're all done?
I think so. You're the expert. You're the expert.
Well, normally we don't split them out like this on on the agenda.
Yeah. So there's not a separate motion for that one.
No, I always, I think uh once the public hearing closed, that was on the agenda to hold a place marker. And then you voted to adopt the motion.
That's.
I think that's how that got in the agenda that way. I think so.
I did talk to Dave earlier because that that, oh. Thank you. All right, um, we're back to department uh departmental reports. Uh, nine point two, letter of support for Community Outreach, Inc. Go to, go to go veterans grant, Julie Arena. And you're not April Holland. There's uh, there's April. So um, good morning. Good morning. Look at this.
Hey, good morning. I'm just going to tee this up and leave it to to Julie and Emily. Um, as you all know, Community Outreach, Inc. is an incredible community organization, offering transformational housing, case management, medical, dental, behavioral health, serves the childcare and so much more. This agenda item requests BOC support for an exciting new grant opportunity at COI. And I'm joined today um by our own Hope Coordinator Julie Arena and by Emily Barton uh from COI. I'll leave it to Julie and Emily to share more information. Thanks so much, you two.
Thanks, April.
Good morning, commissioners. Good to see you. I'm here just to provide a little bit of uh staff overview um of how this request aligns with the county's goals and priorities. Um, and so my name's Julie Arena. I use she/her pronouns. Uh, and the Hope Advisory Board went through a long process to look at our local data, a gap analysis of what services we have and what services we could use more of. And after an eighteen-month-long process, came up with twelve recommendations that you accepted and the city of Corvallis accepted. And two of them really align with what COI is requesting funding for. It's really about the staff needed to help people transition out of homelessness. And staff needed to help um support people to remain in housing so they don't fall back into homelessness. So this is about homelessness solutions and prevention and the staff support needed to do that. Um, and that's why uh this grant application aligns with your already accepted priorities from the Hope recommendations. And I'll pass it over to Emily to talk about what Community Outreach, Inc. or COI does and how this grant application will further support that.
Thank you, Julie. And thank you so much for the opportunity to share more about our grant proposal and about the work at COI. Um, so again, my name is Emily Barton. Um, I'm the Development Director at Community Outreach. Um, and I wanted to share more about the details of the program. What we're asking for specifically is a letter of collaboration. Um, and the letter will be part of a package that will go to the Veterans Affairs. Um, this grant opportunity is called a Grants Per Diem Case Management. Um, and it supports COI's Good To Go Veterans Program. We were actually previous awardees of this grant, um but we're we're hoping for an expansion of this very successful program. Um, if we're awarded again, it will help us to continue to serve veterans in the community with prevention services that help keep vulnerable veterans stably housed. So what that looks like is case managers who are specific to veterans' Good To Go program. They work with veterans who may be experiencing trauma um at risk of homelessness because of income or because of drug and alcohol dependencies um or other situations that are really specific to the to the case. Um, and those but those uh case managers help them to stay housed. It's it's pretty simple. But of course, when they're doing the day-to-day work, it's really complex because each veteran has a unique and complex set of circumstances. So the case managers help um the clients access services at COI. Um, like uh was mentioned before, that includes transformational housing. Um, our dorms, men's, women's, young adults and family dorms. Um, our medical services, that includes clinics. It includes specialty clinics that one is specifically for veterans that happens on an annual rotation basis with other specialty clinics like a women's clinic. Um, physical therapy, cardiovascular care. It's a big list of specialty clinics that our um clients can access. Um, behavioral health services that include mental health counseling, includes alcohol and drug rehabilitation, includes peer support groups and individual um support from a peer support specialist. Um, our veterans advocate that is in the Good To Go program and is one of the case managers is a peer support specialist and our other, you probably know well, Ty Pos, he is a uh QMHP. So uh we have very qualified staff that work with veterans. Um, and they help them access services at COI, but also services in the broad broader community. The Veterans Program is really critical to our mission and our mission is to help people help themselves, lead healthy and productive lives. Um, the the clients are at the core of our mission and we really braid services together to help um each client, some of them just use one service like our uh services that are accessible by our community, including childcare, behavioral health and our food box program. Um, and then other programs are really closely tied to our transformational housing program. And that includes, for the most part, case management. But the Good To Go Program does case management services out in the community for veterans who um, you know, are already housed or have come through other programs and become, just become stably housed. Let's see. So I think personally, as a citizen of Benton County, um, I'll just throw in that my family is a family that includes veterans. My partner is a veteran of the Air Force. And we are so happy to be part of a community that supports veterans um and makes our community welcoming and positive um and safe for for everyone. And so COI is asking for your support in the form of a letter of coordination uh for a grant submission due May fourth. Thank you so much.
I have one question, and that is, um, I'm really glad that you guys are working uh with us in collaboration with the with our housing and homelessness efforts. Um, are you also uh closely aligned with our Veteran Services Office that it runs through um the Council of Governments?
Y- yes, I mean, our Veterans Program has partnerships everywhere. Um, but I would look specifically for a letter of support from from those folks. And I'll I'll check to see if we've already asked. And if we haven't, um, that's a really great suggestion. I'll I'll reach out to those folks as well.
Yeah, uh Mark and Ian are both relatively new over there, but I might, I've met them both and they seem like they're really eager to um form more of a network and to be uh part of that solution um for veterans that are needing assistance.
Great, thank you.
Alicia Lucky over at the Cog.
Yeah, I'll reach out to her. Thank you so much.
Happy to make a motion.
Uh, I had a I had the same uh comment, making sure that uh programs are are coordinated and talking with one another. Cause that that's, um, it just makes efforts um go further. So uh glad to hear that uh the Cogs um portion and and you folks, and I I think your your physical locations are close to one another. So uh, I don't know if that helps, but uh definitely within walking distance. So uh uh and the, my other comment was uh, to Julie and talking about the twelve priorities that were uh, developed with a great amount of effort and really appreciate this. Oh, well, you, you've already said this is what we should be doing. And uh, here's a specific that uh, uh, fits in with the roadmap that was uh, was developed. And um, I, I, I think it, it shows the importance of planning and, and prioritizing. Oh, and uh, this isn't a money ask, so it's fairly easy, but uh, uh, it really helps me to uh, that we've already identified what our priorities are and how the, the current uh, ask uh, fits in versus just kind of, well, we do good work and um, well, yes, but how does that compare to somebody else? So uh, thank you for uh, coordinating those considerable e- efforts, giving us some uh, guidance. We all need guidance. So thank you. So now I'm ready.
Awesome. I move to approve and sign the letter of support for Community Outreach, Inc.'s Good To Go Program for Veterans. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries and, and thank you and looking forward to uh, whether it's from uh, you folks at COI or the Cog and just um, this is an important effort. And glad that uh, there is additional, I don't know if it's quite additional, but um, funding to uh, uh, support this effort.
Thank you.
I, I want to point out that the Veteran Service Office is not a Cog program, per se. I mean, it's ours. We contract with the Cog to deliver it. There, there are veteran service offices and they're our dollars. So, and that, actually that contract is um, up for renewal. Um, so I think that that's one of those things that is a, um, dangling. After Joe left, he was talking to Ryan Boat and to um, staff over there about updating that contract because it has not been updated for quite a while. Um, and there's no staff point person uh, responsible on this side. That's been actually one of the biggest challenges because the Council of Governments has not had a designated person to report to um, and, and collaborate with. Uh, and I've functioned in the de facto role, um, but we need to designate someone at staff level to do that.
Thank you, commissioners.
And now we are on to my, one of my favorite topics. Uh, I had a number ten other and uh,
Oh.
Zan, you've had an other for us.
Other. Yes, um, on Monday, April seventeenth, um, we have uh, a date to uh, head out to Alsey, um, to Commissioner's Corner. Uh, Commissioner Katie Jacobson from Lincoln County will be there also. Um, and we are in the latest um, issue of the Alsey Valley Voice about this meeting. And so uh, wanted to know whether either you would like to uh, attend that meeting. I went to the last one. Um, and I'd be happy to do it, but I, we talked about rotating. So um, just wanted to confirm that someone was going to be there. Uh, it's at five thirty and I anticipate that it would probably go until seven.
And uh, I've got a fair board meeting at six and with the staff changes and I, I, I feel like I should attend that.
I think there's a city uh, council meetings that night too, aren't there?
Yeah, looks like it. Um, like for the city of Corvallis. Yeah, um, I, so I could, I could go. That would mean that I would miss uh, one of my daughter's volleyball. Um, but so either way, I mean, if you want to go.
I'm fine going, okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I'd love to go. I mean, I, I have a warm spot in my heart for Alsey, smaller communities, and especially when they're on the upswing and, and more uh, activity going on. I, I'm all in favor of supporting that, but uh, can't do that particular one, but would be glad to make the drive, a beautiful drive to Alsey.
I think that uh, the community out there is interested in doing this quarterly. So we'll just have to make sure that the next quarterly date is on a date when one of you can actually attend.
And uh, they had a very successful spaghetti dinner last month and, and uh, there, there was mention of well, let's do this quarterly. So, or uh, regularly, I think quarterly was mentioned and I don't know how far that, that effort is proceeding, but that, that's another
Yep.
opportunity to uh, visit Alsey and maybe even get dinner out of the deal.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. And then there are a lot of the same people involved in coordinating, coordinating both of these events. And so I think eventually it uh, we'll figure out, yeah, either merge or figure out a rhythm that works for everyone. And so it's predictable on our calendars. Um, but I did, uh, yeah, I went through the Alsey Valley Voice and found a couple of issues that are highlighted there that the community is interested in. So I'll, I will report on a couple of those when we go out.
Great.
Sounds good. Um, so I had one other thing that I thought of. Um, so tomorrow, we're scheduled tomorrow morning for advisory boards and commissions interviews. And I just wanted to verify that all three of us are going to be there. I'll be there. Okay. I, in the, there was some crossing of scheduling, so I had given that slot away to somebody else, but I am working with them to reschedule it. But I just figured I would double, triple check with you guys before, you know, making it official. So, okay. And that is virtual, so I will see you both in the morning virtually.
Tomorrow.
Yep, tomorrow morning.
Okay. Um, yeah, that, that sounds fine. That, I think that was originally scheduled for Monday and I was not here, so I'm, I'm here now.
Got it. Okay, perfect.
All right, any other uh, business? Get that and I'll get this. Meeting adjourned.
There we go.